Welcome, everybody. I would like to call this Greenville County Council's special called committee meeting the hold to order, and we will begin with the invocation. I'll call on Vice Chairman Bradley.
Thank you. Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank the Lord for a country, for a state, for a county that we can come and we can discuss business, and Lord, I pray that you watch over us and lead us and guide us. Help us to remember who's in charge, Lord, that you are. You're in charge of all. I pray, Lord, you'll watch over us and lead us and guide us in all that we say and all that we do. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Welcome to everybody that's in attendance. Appreciate you being willing to serve on one of our various boards or commissions. Before we get to the interview section, I do believe that some of our colleagues may have some discussion points they want to hit before we get into that, so I'll open the floor for that and then we'll move forward from there. I think Counselor McGahey might have that.
Yes, sir. Due to recent events, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the policy that we used for to select the board members and commission members in their application process for this go-around, and that we can listen to the people that did not attend a meeting previously before the application process. There's been some back and forth. There's been several candidates that fall in this category. I'll let you get into that more, but I'd like to make a motion to suspend that policy so we can move forward tonight and hear everybody even that hasn't followed the policy as stated.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion, Counsel?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm certainly in favor of that. Just a question about those who applied, who we told that their application couldn't make our list for today or the next one. Would that include those candidates as well?
I would think that it would, and then we would probably just ask for our staff to send the emails back to those people and inform them that they could come to the next meeting and still fulfill the commitment of having the interview at that point.
Yeah, what I would suggest is after we vote on this to suspend the policy, and then I'll make a motion to hold those. And I have that list from the clerk of which boards have people that we need to hear next week. So what I would ask you to do, Chairman, is that we hear everybody that's here tonight, and then those people that weren't able to apply or applied, they didn't meet the criteria at the time that we come in next week and hear those people, and then we'll vote at that time on those boards.
Okay.
If that's acceptable to the whole.
Yeah, I think that's great also just because we're not voting tonight anyway, so that allows, at least we're not suspending any votes. It's more just the ability to hear everybody.
Okay, perfect.
And just to be clear, there are some that we would normally be voting on tonight, correct? Okay. So just for the public, so you kind of know what we were talking about there, if you are part of one of the board considerations that are a part of this conversation, then we wouldn't be voting on that particular one tonight, so we allow for those other people to interview at points. At that point, we would actually vote. And I think, just to go through those before we, just we can put this all together, Greater Greenville Sanitation, Historic Preservation Commission, Human Relations Commission, and the Museum Commission are the ones that we would not be voting on tonight, but we would still hear your interview, and then we would vote on them after the other applicants have the opportunity to interview. Hopefully that made sense. Tried to figure out the best way to say that. So the motion is to suspend the policy, specifically Section 4. At the time of application, applicants must have attended at least one meeting of the board commission on which they wish to serve. Does that sound correct? All right?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right. And then, any other motions that we need to pass, or is we good just to move forward with holding those that I mentioned?
Mr. Chairman, you can hold the appointment or the balloting for those four now, or you can wait until the end of those interviews and just move those, move the motion to hold the balloting at that point, either way you want to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I agree with the clerk. I suggest we hear everybody tonight and we'll hold the balloting until next week.
Do you want to go ahead and do that for those specific groups now?
Yeah, well, I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, we vote on the ones that aren't the ones you mentioned to get that out of the way, and then for next week, the ones, the four you did mention, we'll hold those until, the actual balloting until next week.
Gotcha. All right. I know Dr. Fant and Counsel Russo just joined us. The vote that we're about to take is on a motion to hold...
We already took it.
Well...
The second one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We took a vote, we took a vote already to suspend Section 4 of the policy, which allows people now that have not attended a meeting to apply and interview. And now we're taking a second motion, which is to hold Greater Greenville Sanitation District, Historic Preservation Commission, Human Relations Commission, and Museum Commission until the next interview meeting, so that we can hear from those other applicants first, and then we'll vote on those as well.
Okay.
Good. All right. So all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now, we can get to the good stuff. I will, I'll call out the agenda item and then your name, and obviously you'll have three minutes to come up and share why you would like to serve on that specific board or commission, and we look forward to hearing from you. And we will get started with the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. There are five vacancies, and we will start with Joshua Jones. Welcome, sir.
Hi. Thank you for having me. My name's Joshua Jones. My wife and I own Cityscape Winery here in Greenville County. We're in Rick Bradley's district there, and I was approached to apply for the accommodations tax. They felt I might be a good member because we have run an agritourism business here in the upstate. It'll be 10 years in November since we have owned Cityscape Winery. And we started out as a very small team of just me, my wife, and my dad, just three of us, out in the country, growing grapes, making wine, and it has since grown into the state of South Carolina's largest winery and vineyard. We now employ 65 people here in town, and we host numerous events throughout the year. And my role there, I do the wine-making, but I also do a lot of the financial oversight. And I personally thought it'd be interesting to be on the board of the accommodations tax so that I could have some say in how those tax dollars are spent towards marketing businesses like mine and helping to bring a better visitor experience when people come out to visit establishments like mine and many of the other ones in South Carolina and Greenville County here specifically. So based on those qualifications, I think it'd be something interesting for me. I've never served on a committee like this, and I could bring some new insights to people and not being in this role before. Hopefully I have something fun to offer. So, that's all.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Joyce McCarrill. Going once. All right. We will move on then to Danielle Nance. Danielle Nance. All right. We'll move on to the next. We have Jake O'Dear. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys having me. Jake O'Dear, Director of Sales of the Aloft here in downtown, Residence and Airport on Pelham. I served on committee last year. I filled an open-year slot. Learned a lot from that committee. In my hotel career, I've been hotels for over 20 years now, general manager for a majority of that time, creating budgets, opening hotels, following budgets. So I definitely have a lot of experience making sure you put the right dollars to get the correct ROI in return. And in this position, I'm currently been in the Aloft for five years now. Been involved with a lot of events in Greenville County, the city of Greenville, so I feel like I have a good pulse of what events really have an impact with the community, have an impact with outsiders. So I feel I have a good idea of where we can spread the money out to get the most impact. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Samantha Reynolds. We will move on to the next. I know Mr. Tom Stitt is not with us because he's under the weather, but he did provide counsel with a paper with his thoughts on it, just so everybody can check that out. He should have it in front of you. So we will move on to the final for this one, which is Christina Zolly. Is it Zolly or Zolly?
Zolly.
Zolly, okay. Welcome.
Thank you, guys, for having me. My name is Christina Zolly. I'm a proud Greenville native and also a member of the Visit Greenville SC team. So my job at Visit Greenville is to promote tourism to outside markets. My job specifically is a main reason that I really love this committee. I've been on it for two years, really enjoyed it. It's a really nice mix of what I currently do now and also a passion for my community. The job that I have now is advertising communications. So my job is to manage a $6 million budget to advertise outside the market, to drive as much tourism into this area, to help generate taxes for our community. The same purpose that I do every day is what this committee does, and so I find it really rewarding. And not to mention that, there's a ton of data and research that I have available to me that I can bring to this committee to help inform and make more business decisions based on data. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Counselor Seaman.
Ms. McCaskill, maybe just, this is one of the ones that definitely has spots for certain things. And so maybe just for counsel to remember, some of the positions are open for restaurants, small hotel, large hotel. And I know some of the incumbents that weren't here this evening, but they do represent those categories that have to be represented on the A-Tax Committee. And so just to keep that in mind as we're balloting, that, oh, and perfect, she's already, and it's already on the ballot, so we know. But just wanted to make sure, because this is one that does have some qualifications to it.
All right. Thank you. I know we're finishing up, but we'll go ahead and begin the next agenda item, which is for the Airport Commission. We will start with Amber Aldrich.
She's out of town.
Gotcha. Okay.
From the medical...
Medical, okay. Thank you. Then let's move to Brad Medcalf.
Out of town.
Out of town, okay. How about Van Swafford? Knocked it out of the park for this one. So we have two vacancies with no interviews coming up next for the airport.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What about the Special Tax District?
All right. We will now move on to the next agenda item, which is Greater Greenville Sanitation District. And we have our first, which is Helen Brockman.
Out of town.
Out of town, all right. And let's move to Ms. Monique Williams. Welcome, Ms. Williams.
Hello, hello. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. I am interested in continuing serving on the board for Greater Greenville Sanitation. This year I have learned so much about sanitation. I've learned the different trucks that they have, the front loaders, the side loaders, everything that they have over there. I've learned the HR department, building the morale with the community of Greater Greenville. I took the opportunity to learn about each person's job and write them each a thank you note, because although they deal with trash, they do deal with the community. So I took it personally and wrote handwritten thank you notes to each and every 125 employees that they had at the time. So I feel like with continuing to go along with the community that I serve, with Adopt-A-Road, Adopt-A-Howay, picking up the trash, informing our community of different things that are going on with Greater Greenville, I would like to continue to serve in that role to make sure that they are growing in this district and make sure that the employees are feeling appreciated. So if you would continue to let me serve, I would greatly appreciate it. I've enjoyed that. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. All right. Next up on the agenda, we have the Historic Preservation Commission. We will start with Sonia Dawson. Welcome, Ms. Dawson.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself and share why I'm interested in serving on the Historic Preservation Commission. I am Sonia Dawson. I'd like to tell you about a church building. It's located in downtown Greenville, less than two miles from here. It's a two-story handmade brick structure. The front entrance is a double door with transom surmounted by a hood with brackets and gingerbread frieze. The front facade features three windows. The central window is tripartite with fan motif, and two smaller windows on either side have hooded fan lights. The walls are supported by buttresses. This is my church, Mattoon Presbyterian Church. It's on the National Register of Historic Places. It's a small historic African-American church that has been part of the Greenville community for 147 years. And our current building, located in the Hampton Pickney neighborhood, has stood for 138 of those years. While the building still stands strong, time has left its mark. I'm fortunate to have been part of the congregation helping with the preservation of Mattoon over the years, ensuring that the historic nature of the structure was not impacted during the restoration processes. I've come to appreciate the craftsmanship and care that went into building Mattoon, the double layers of handmade bricks that make the walls of the church, the wavy glass that was used in the internal doors, the tongue and groove woodwork along the walls, the curved pulpit area designed to carry voices and songs throughout the sanctuary. Being involved with that preservation effort helped me better understand that saving historic buildings isn't just about bricks and beams. It's also about honoring the stories, the people, and the communities that they represent. Professionally, I bring a background of civil engineering with a bachelor's degree from Georgia Tech. I am a registered professional engineer here in South Carolina. I previously served as subdivision administrator for Greenville County, so I'm familiar with plan review processes and working with commissions and working with the public. It is my hope to continue to use my time and talents to give back to the community. So thank you for considering my application.
Thank you very much. Next on the list, we have Robert Forrester. We will move on from there to Mr. Brian Scott Johnson. Welcome, sir.
Hi, thank you. My name's Scott Johnson. I'm in District 22, Mr. Farmer's District, and I am a retired history teacher here in Greenville. Worked for Greenville County for 28 years, I think it was. I try to, it sort of blurs as time passes. But history has always been a very big focus to me. I'm a ninth-generation resident of Greenville County. My family has been here before the county existed. And in my retirement, I do historical research, both genealogical and land, different facilities, things like some former swimming pools and things that people wanted to know about and this, that, and the other. I also serve on the Board of Directors of the Society of Cincinnati and the American Revolution Institute in Washington, DC. We have a museum called Anderson House that I also serve on the board there. I've served on our museum committee. I ran our history lecture for six years. I also serve on the Clemson University Historic Properties Advisory Committee for the Calhoun House, the Andrew Pickens House, and the Hanover House, which was a Huguenot house that was moved up from the Low Country in the 40s. History is very passionate to me, and it's passionate in a sense that it relates to the living now, not just the past. The continuity between the two is something that I think we break sometimes, and I think being aware of where we've been gives us a much better aspect and focus as to where you want to go, but you still need to keep what you've had in the past. In terms of museum curatorial activities, I've curated exhibits in Washington. I serve on a charity board in the state of Delaware on historic preservation, and I've also written and published. To that note, when I filled out my application, the little boxes, you couldn't get enough stuff in there. Not that I have all that stuff, but I had too much for that. Anyway, I know I copied you, I think, in on email, and she has a copy of my CV, if you would like to look at that for any details. Any questions? Thank you so much for your consideration.
I think you did have a question.
Yeah, all I really had to say is, if you've ever been on his Facebook, it's a great place for a rabbit hole. This guy is just straight history 24/7. He's got my personal endorsement. Honestly, I spend a little too much time on your Facebook just creeping through everything that you post, and it was incredible. So, yeah, he's got my full recommendation for being on the board.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to the last one for this agenda item, which is Teresa Slack. Welcome.
Hey. I have just spent my first term with the Historic Commission, and I've got to tell you, these people are the most passionate, committed people to preserving the Greenville County's history. I have never met so many wonderful people, and I don't think Greenville County Council uses them as much as they could. We are committed to preserving homes, businesses, even cemeteries. If you have people in your district, please reach out to us, because we will help guide them to preserving their home, their business, or that cemetery, that family cemetery even. We each have our own personal passions. Mine happens to be, right now, is Camp Sevier, which I know a lot of us know about. In 2017, myself, Don Coons, who is a 50-year historian, and a couple of other people, were committed to bringing Camp Sevier to the forefront. We convinced county council to proclaim September 29th as Remember Old Hickory Day. We are now moving forward with a nonprofit, and we are hoping to be able to continue our work with county council, to get this message into the schools, to build memorials. Not just in Camp, what people don't understand, Camp Sevier was Piedmont Park, but they also had a place up in Travelers Rest. They had another place up in River Falls. This was a massive undertaking, and they changed world history. So this is my passion, but we each have our own passion on the commission. So I would like to continue to work. We do have a Facebook page, which I run, for the commission. I have other Facebook pages, which is Greenville, South Carolina History Detectives. People come to me and they say, have you ever heard of that Lay's Potato Chips got our start there? No. So I write about that. And that's that, and then I got two pages on Camp Sevier. And I run a few textile pages as well. So anyway, I want to continue my work. I love it, and I hope you guys will start using us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next agenda item and group, which is the Human Relations Commission. There are five vacancies. We will start with Tempest We will move to Asia Johnson.
Hi.
Hello.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. I am passionate about housing. It's something that everyone should have, but as you know, there is a prevalent homeless issue, and I've gone on the streets to speak to several people that have been homeless, and I've asked, hey, what can we do to make it better? And then I've also partnered with Greenville Together and Reunited. And someone that has an invisible disability that has experienced homelessness due to my disability, I know the specific intimate inner workings of trying to pull yourself up by the bootstraps. I'm a huge disability advocate, and it's just something that I'm very passionate about, and we can't have community without the organizations that come together. So what I would specifically bring is just being willing to have those conversations with everyone, address barriers such as we have more than $10 billion employers in Greenville. We have the training opportunities available both in Greenville and in Spartanburg, but one thing that we do lack is a robust transit system. So just working with everyone to address any barriers that we may have, mental health, what have you. And so I'm just very passionate about housing. I'm very passionate about spreading information. So if I'm elected, I'm just a people person, and I'm very teachable, I'm humble, and that's what I would bring. And I just really appreciate everyone's opportunity to be able to interview us today, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. All right. Next up, we have Lisa Beth Medlock.
She was traveling today. She was going to try her best to get here, so she may be a little late.
Gotcha. All right. Then the next we have is Kimberly Minor. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you so much for all of your time. My name is Kimberly Minor, and I am very excited about the potential of having the opportunity to serve on the Human Relations Committee. I bring a decade of experience of working with domestic, sexual, and human trafficking victims that experience homelessness as part of the process of the crisis that they're going through. Currently, the state of South Carolina is number five in the country for domestic violence, and 64% of those who have gone through some type of crisis have wound up losing their job, losing their home, losing their bank accounts, and it leaves them in a precarious position of not only how do they take care of themselves, how do they provide for themselves, but how do they provide for their children? And that burden comes on, you know, each one of the states that have to deal with this crisis. And, you know, when we don't have to, when we have to deal with that and we have to deal with the homelessness, it costs the country as a whole $83.4 billion a year in healthcare costs because of the fact that these people are left stranded because their hands are tied and the court system is behind in catching up with the crisis that we have right now. And I personally have interviewed and spoken with many, many legislators. I have been a policy advocate and have testified in front of the state House and Senate and helped get a couple of bills passed in the hopes to help, you know, future victims, whether the domestic violence, sexual violence, or human trafficking. I've worked with the Underground Railroad. I've worked with the, I'm on the speaker bureau for the National Association for Domestic Violence for RAIN. I have been part of the Arizona Domestic Violence and Sexual Abuse Coalition, on the national coalition. And I also have a bachelor and master's in... And I also have a bachelor or master's in criminal justice, and I will be finishing my PhD in criminal justice in January. So, I'm extremely passionate about this issue and wanting to make it so that these people don't have to look at the prospect of deciding whether to be homeless or stay with their abuser. So, thank you for your time and your opportunity to hopefully serve. And if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Absolutely. Any questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have Jessica Owens.
Hello. Good evening, council members. I'm Jessica Owens, live down in District 26. I've been serving on Human Relations for the past three years. It's been a great experience. For the almost past year, I've been serving as chair. And I guess that's where I feel like my talents are really being utilized. During the day, I'm actually the chief operating officer at the Phoenix Center. So, I've been able to take my experience there and actually translate it into how I can be helpful at Human Relations. And part of that has been helping the commissioners themselves kind of get on board. Like, we've even talked about here, I've heard y'all talk about, like, the attendance issues, right? And so, now we have people attending meetings. We are having regular committee meetings. We are starting to look at their strategic plan. We are working on bylaws. And we have a really good group of invested people right now. And I guess what I'm asking is an opportunity to continue to serve, because I want to see that good work we've been putting in continue to flourish. So, I really appreciate your consideration, and I'll take any questions you may have for me.
Thank you. Seems like you covered it all for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have Toby Sizmore. Out of town. We have a lot of out-of-towners today. Then we will move to Raymond Turner. Out of town as well? All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, clerk, could I ask you to reach out to all these people and have them come next week?
Yes, definitely.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, we will move now to the Museum Commission. There are three vacancies. First up would be Joseph Blake. Welcome, sir.
I'm Joe Blake, a longtime resident of Greenville in District 24. And I'm interested in serving on the Museum Commission, because I think that museums and cultural offerings really make a community. They're a vibrant part of it. They're good for our residents. They bring tourists. They help our educational efforts and the whole economic development of your town. And the Museum of Greenville is just a true treasure that we should enjoy and support as best we can. I've been a longtime member of the Museum Association and supporter through the Collectors Group and the support of the Antique Show. As far as experience from the cultural side, I've been involved for over 40 years with the Greenville Symphony. I've been its president, and I'm currently an advisor to it on its Board and Governance Committee. Along with Brad, I was one of the founders of Artisphere. I was the first lawyer, drew the paper, developed that, and served as a secretary. And I'm currently on the Sigel Music Museum Board in my final term that ends this year. And I've served as an officer and on the executive committee of it. From a work standpoint, I'm a retired lawyer for 45 years. The first 30, I was with Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd, five of those as his managing partner. Then I went in-house with the Greenville Hospital System as its chief corporate officer for 15 years. And I just think both of those, you know, taught me a lot about what makes a good board and an efficient entity. Most of my, all of my practice has been in the corporate and finance areas. So, most of my work has been advising public and private corporations, 501(c)(3)'s, and even governmental bodies on the way to run an efficient and help efficient and compliant legal entity, museum, business, whatever. So, that's why I'm interested in serving. I think my background would help or could help the museum as it moves forward. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions? Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Brad Campbell. Welcome, sir.
Hi, Liz. I'm Brad Campbell. I am applying for reappointment to the Museum Commission. I am currently its chairman, and I have been for a number of years. I'd like to be reappointed for another term, at least one more for several reasons. First, I care a lot about the museum. I think it does tremendous things for the quality of life in our community. I like the fact its educational outreach is geared towards schoolchildren and schoolteachers. I like the fact it's focused on the survey of American art. I think art museums contribute to the quality of life in the community, and I think that contributes to economic development, which matters to all of us. Second reason, and an important reason, is that our executive director is going to retire within the next two years. I would very much like to be part of the process that ensures we find an appropriate and well-qualified replacement for that person. And it's not just someone who is familiar with the collections, but it is someone who understands our community. It's someone who will interact well with our community and who will be a strong supporter of the museum's outreach and increase it. As you know, the commission's job is fiduciary and stewardship oversight of the museum and its assets. I'm a retired CPA, so as you would expect, I learned a lot about budgeting and finances and managerial things. Those are my skills. Those are the things I bring to my role at the commission. I also bring many years of experience, both with the museum on its association as well as on the commission. So, in conclusion, I would appreciate your support. I would very much like to serve another term on the commission. Thank you for your time. Is there questions I can ask? Answer, I'll ask.
Any questions? I would just say that if you have not been utilized for voiceover work for the museum, then they're missing out because you have a very low voice, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your kind words.
All right, next up, we have Scott Kilgore. Welcome, sir.
Hope everybody's having a good evening. I know this is one of those tasks that you don't look forward to every year, but we appreciate everything you're doing. My name is Scott Kilgore, and again, thank you for letting me be here. I think this is a great idea to get a chance to see everybody. It's a little bit different format than the last few times I've come before you. I am a husband, a father, and more importantly, a grandfather. And I'm also an architect and what my business partner calls a chronic volunteer. For years, I just enjoy seeing different aspects of what's going on in Greenville. I've lived here all my life, and it's just a great community. So, all the people coming into Greenville County, I think they need to jump in and find some way to make us all better. And it's really cool to see the good ideas that have come in with all these relatively new folks. So, my understanding of the commission, after being on it for 12 years, I think the two gentlemen that were before me are highly qualified and would look forward to serving with them. I'm afraid I haven't met the other candidate yet. And so, what I've, I guess the takeaway is that in order for the museum to remain accredited, they've got to keep two sets of books. One for the artwork, and that's derived from donors and people giving gifts. And then there's the operation and the physical plant of the museum itself, which comes from the county funds. And we're responsible to council for periodic reporting of what we're doing. And like Brad said, the fiscal health of the museum. And we spend the first part of every meeting, after we have a scrumptious salad, we spend time going over all the finances, the balance sheet, and seeing where there's variations from our budget that we set earlier in the year. And it's, everything is run wide open, above board, and the presentations are clear. So, I think Brad runs the meetings, and so he's done a wonderful job over the last several years. I've learned a lot about the commission. As an architect, I've taken several art and architectural history. My dad was a museum buff, so he dragged me to all the, you know, museums wherever we were going. And he's one of those ones that actually reads the card beside the artwork. And so, it has been just a part of what I do. So, I'm sorry to run over. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and the last one for this group, we have Ms. Elizabeth Schulte. Did I say it? Schulte? All right. I know I was 50/50, so. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Elizabeth Schulte, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all. I'm very hopeful that I will be added to this commission, because to echo what's been said tonight, I'm very passionate about the museum and the museum field. I have spent my entire career working with art and historic artifacts, collections throughout the United States, and a little bit in Italy. I am a staunch advocate for the preservation and conservation of cultural heritage. I do a lot of public outreach and a lot of speaking on that topic. In my capacity as a conservator, I have worked and collaborated with all departments in a museum and have a comprehensive knowledge of how museums operate, including exhibition coordination and installation, working with the public, creating educational programs, strategic planning and implementation, fundraising, and disaster planning, response, and recovery. I have worked very closely with curators, directors, registrars, and artists. And I see this museum as a major part of the community and a great asset to the county of Greenville. It is a place for communal engagement, education, dialogue, and appreciation for this great collection. So, I am a hard worker. I'm a team player. I believe that my expertise will add to this commission, helping it to fulfill the museum's mission and to continue to make the museum vital to the community and a must-see for any of the visitors to Greenville. So, I thank you and look forward to doing more with Greenville. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. I will go ahead and make these announcements. We have two of our groups that we have votes tallied and finalized. So, for the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, we have Joshua Jones. We have Danielle Nance. We have Jake O'Dear, and we have Christina Zolli. We only have four for this because there was no second small hotel candidate, so that seat will remain open. And then for the other, we have the Airport Planning Commission with two vacancies, and those will go to the incumbents, Brad Metcalf and Van Swafford. And of course, the other ones that we mentioned will be held over until the next interview session so that those other applicants can come and have a chance to interview. And then the only other question I have under the next agenda items with the special tax districts nominations are these ones that us as council select, or?
You, the council district representative will make the nominations. Council will still vote on them as a body.
Okay, and so the only one that I see that I wanted to make sure to point out is there's, for Lake Forest, there's only two vacancies with three applicants so far. So, I guess we will address those at the next meeting?
Well, it's up to the representative which ones he wants to nominate. If he wants to nominate all three and you guys go to a ballot, we're not prepared for that tonight, but we can do that at the next meeting. Or he can nominate his two to fill, and council vote on those.
Well, I'd say probably the easiest thing then would be just submit it to the clerk. And that way, at the next meeting, she'll have the two that you've selected, and then we go from there.
Mr. Chairman, I actually think the nomination could be made tonight.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sure?
Yeah, I'd rather get over with.
All right.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make a motion on behalf of all the uncontested that we approve those nominations by acclamation.
Sure.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye. All right, so with all those, we'll go down, I guess, to G. If he would like to make his two.
Yes, I am nominating John Austin and Britton Swingle.
All right, and are there any, are there any of these that did not meet that criteria that we would need to give time?
I'm sorry. These are all the applicants for those boards. There are nothing.
All right, so we need to vote on this one then. All in favor of the nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. And I believe that concludes that section. So, if there is nothing else, I'll entertain one final motion.
Mission adjourned.
All in favor, please say aye.